Hey there. Want to make your voice heard at a Board of Supervisors meeting? We're all ears. Here's how you can get involved. First, hop online and look at the agendas. This will give you the scoop on what's coming up before the Board. Each agenda item includes a brief description of the issue, the recommendations, and potential impacts. If you need more detail, check out the detailed reports online. Those are called "Board Letters." Then decide if you want to speak at Tuesday's General Legislative Session or Wednesday's Land Use Session.
You'll have three opportunities to have your say. Let's start with non-agenda public comment.
This is your chance to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but try and keep your topic related to county government. For non-agenda public comments, you can speak at either the Tuesday or Wednesday session, but not both. So pick your day accordingly.
And keep in mind, the Board can't act on the spot. They'll refer your comments to the Chief Administrative Officer, who will look into the issue.
Last thing. The Board will hear from the first 10 speakers, five in person and five by phone at the beginning of the session. Then all the remaining speakers will get their chance to speak after the discussion items. During the consent agenda, the Board handles a bunch of routine items with one vote. If you want to comment on an item, keep it simple. For example, "I'm John Doe, speaking on Item 5, and I agree with approving the contract." Discussion items are the main event where the Board debates before making a decision. Want to speak at one of the meetings? It's really easy. Just hop online and fill out a quick request form at publiccomment.sandiegakounty.gov. Pick the meeting you're interested in, hit the "Register" button, then fill in your details. Make sure to include a phone number if you plan on speaking by phone. Prefer speaking at the podium in the board chamber? No problem. Just pick the "in-person" option. After that, just check off the agenda items you want to talk about and let them know you're for, against, or neutral on them. Hit "Register," and you're good to go. A confirmation email will land in your inbox to wrap it up. If you're speaking by phone, the email will include the instructions for how to dial in. Be sure to submit your request early. Once public comment begins on the agenda item, we can't take any more requests to speak.
And if you have documents, hand them to the deputy clerk when it's your turn to speak at the podium.
Now, you get two minutes to speak, but if lots of people want to talk, it might get cut to one minute. So you might want to consider writing two sets of comments, one for two minutes, another one for one. That way, if time's cut, you won't be scrambling. There's also a countdown clock at the podium to keep you on track.
Once you're at the podium, stay on topic. Stick to the current agenda item. If you stray off-topic, you might get a gentle nudge to get back to the point. Keep your comments related to the agenda items' recommendations, because that's what the Board is relying on to make a decision. Also, speak directly to the Board. They're the ones making the decision.
When your time's up, it's up. Overstaying might mean getting muted or even asked to leave. Now for some ground rules. For safety, keep aisles and doorways clear. If there isn't a seat, head across the hall to Room 302 or the fourth-floor balcony to watch the meeting. Respect is huge. Everyone should feel heard. That means you, other speakers, and the Board of Supervisors. Disruptive behavior gets one warning, and after that, a deputy sheriff might show you the door. So let's keep it respectful.
Your voice matters, and we want to hear from you. Remember, we're all here to make a difference.
Good morning. I will now call the October 1st, 2025 San Diego County Board of Supervisors Land Use Legislative Session to order. Ryan, please call the role for today's session.
Thank you, Chair Lawson-Reemer. Supervisor Anderson, Supervisor Desmond, Chair Pro-Tan McGarry, Vice Chair Montgomery-Steph, and Chair Lawson-Reemer.
Here. Before we begin, I wanted to announce that Item 4, Harmony Grove Village South, is timed certain at 4:00 PM. I mean, sorry, 1:00 PM. Item 4 is at 1:00 PM. We didn't want everyone to have to just sit around waiting, and we didn't know how long the morning would go, because we have consent and a bunch of items. So 1 o'clock, we will definitely start it. The Harmony Grove, Item Number 4. So that was my timed certain announcement. Okay. I want to take a moment to address some House rules. Public engagement is the cornerstone of transparent and accountable government, and these Board of Supervisors meetings are one of the primary venues where all San Agans can make their voices heard. The county is committed to a work environment free from unlawful discrimination and harassment, including sexual, racial, religious, age, disability, or any other forms of discrimination or harassment. Under the Board's rules, speakers are not allowed to use loud, shouting, threatening, impertinent, slanderous, profane, or abusive language to any member of the Board, staff, or the general public. Additionally, all remarks and questions must remain on-topic during the duration of your speaking time and must be addressed to the Board and not to county staff. If your remarks or questions are off-topic, you will receive one warning. If they continue off-topic, you will forfeit the remainder of your time. Any speaker who breaks these rules after being issued a warning and continuing off-topic will be asked to leave the chambers for the remainder of the meeting. Finally, speakers threatening violence will be reported to law enforcement and removed from the meeting. This is a space for community engagement, deliberation, and progress, not harassment, violence, and hate. So the first item on the Order of Business is the Report of Actions Taken Yesterday in Closed Session. I'll ask County Council to report the actions.
Yes, good morning. The Board of Supervisors met in closed session starting at 6:31 PM and ending at 7:12 PM. Supervisor Desmond was absent. For the regular closed-session item, there are no reportable actions. For the Housing Authority portion of the closed session, there were also Housing Authority Commissioners present, including Commissioners Berry and Higgins. And for that item, the Housing Authority approved the initiation of litigation. No further report.
Okay, thank you very much. We now proceed with non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board on subject matters within the Board's jurisdiction, but not an item on the meeting agenda. In other words, the topic must be within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. It can't be just anything random, but it is not on our meeting agenda. The only action we may take is a referral to the CIO. Under the Board's rules, speakers speak once per meeting for non-agenda public communication, either yesterday's General Session or today's Land Use Session, not both sessions. Speakers may select which session to address the Board at their own convenience. We will be taking all remaining non-agenda public communication this morning before we begin consent. Additionally, in accordance with Board rules, in order to ensure timely completion of today's agenda, for any discussion item with 10 or more speakers, individuals have one minute to share their opinion at the Chair's discretion. According to Rule 4A, members of the public that are non-English-speaking and need interpretation assistance will receive twice the allotted time for their comments. And a final reminder. According to the Board's Rules of Procedure, audience members shall not whistle, clap, stomp feet, or do anything that disrupts the proceedings. If you disrupt the meeting in any way, you will be given a warning, and after that warning, if you disrupt the meeting again, you will be directed to leave the chamber for the remainder of the meeting. Ryan, please call the non-agenda public speakers.
Thank you, Chair Lawson-Reemer. We have 13 total requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda for individuals in person and 10 requesting to speak... Oh, sorry, 14 total. 10 requesting to speak by phone. And as noted, we'll be hearing all non-agenda public communication this morning right now. So for those that have requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers as your name is called. If you could please come forward and stand on the arrows and tell it is your turn to speak at the podium. Then have two minutes to address the Board. Please begin by stating your name for the record. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals, allegedly Audra, Dorothea Flanagan, and Joan Brophy.
My person uses the name Audra. Yesterday, you gave an award for Kinship Care Month. If people really understood what that was about, it's actually about children who are abducted from their families for nefarious reasons, because it's a money-making opportunity, and they're put into foster care, and then they're adopted out, like you want to do with Malaika and Zaya Robinson. And the sad thing is that you give those people awards, like it's a good thing, instead of... And you had Alfredo sitting here saying that you work to keep families together. That's not true. Money goes to foster kids. That money should go to keep families together, to help the parents that need help when they need it, not just go to put them with another family. Oh, while you guys hide sexual assault as well that's happening in the county, and you guys are bearing it. You sit there, and your caseworkers say that I am coaching a three-year-old to report that, or that her mother is creating these allegations. It is detrimental to Malaika and Zaya Robinson when you are doing that. And every time I show this picture, the person on the back end seems to go ahead and hide it. That's a problem. And you know what else happens? You let these people speak freely here that are getting these awards like they're doing something so great, but if you're a family member, like the grandfather of Malaika and Zaya has a restraining order because County Council and the guardian ad litem, Jessica Nicole Miller, I mean Feldman, and Nicole McConn are working together to keep the grandfather away from his grandchildren because he's exposing the fraud in the county. And because the father is too... There is a warrant out for his arrest with $10,000 bond. So you guys don't do everything to keep families together. You tear them apart, you hide sexual abuse, and you condemn the people that are exposing it. Something needs to be done.
And as Dorothea is coming forward, I'd like to invite forward Robert Magricle.
Hello. I'm Dorothea Flanagan of the 5th County District. I came down here to make a correction about what I said last June 10. There are not nine billboards on Old Highway 395. I reran it, and it's 11 billboards. Seems like the gambling casinos have lost their respect for Mother Earth, that they themselves need eight billboards when they only need one between the exits. I hate to sound sarcastic, but that's pristine beauty out there that we're looking at. Few of us are going to be driving 50 miles to come down here and talk about this. I want to give you the history of San Francisco. About 25, 30 years ago, they had leadership that was poor, not that it got any better, where billboards illegally and legally came in. They had no way of knowing which ones. Couldn't keep track of it. 600 of them were illegally installed. That's the beginning of destroying your place. It's incompatible. It just does not go with their beautiful antique buildings and things like that. I hate to see this happening to San Diego County. Just as I drove down here on 15, there is in the right-of-way a huge billboard which is on the books, not legal. I came down here to save San Diego County. Put a moratorium on the billboards. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, understanding, Robert, you didn't mean to sign up for a non-agenda, so we've moved you to Item 5, so we've taken care of that. So last call for Joan... Or John, John Brophy.
I think you were talking about me, but I'm speaking for Item 14.
Gotcha. Okay, so we'll move you as well, John. So we will go ahead to our phone callers now. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. And we'll go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Hi, good morning, Supervisors. My name is Madison, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of families in our unincorporated communities who do not want more marijuana shops in our neighborhoods. The latest research should make that clear. A new review of 99 studies involving more than 220,000 people published in the Annals of Internal Medicine and highlighted by the Epoch Times shows that today's high THC cannabis products, vapes, dabs, and concentrates, are not the marijuana of the past. Typical THC levels in the 1980s were around 2% to 4%. Today, marijuana flower averages 20%. And vaping devices often deliver 70% to 90% THC. These products are directly linked to acute psychosis, schizophrenia, and addiction, sometimes within just 12 hours of use. The same review found that over half the studies linked high THC use to increased anxiety and 41% to depression. Frequent users are far more likely to develop cannabis use disorder with impaired mood, motivation, and daily functioning. These harms matter most for our youth. When more pot shops open, access and normalization increase. Young people, already bombarded with advertising and social pressure, are the ones most at risk. Their developing brains are more vulnerable to psychosis, hallucinations, and long-term mental health problems. Parents in unincorporated areas know this, and they do not want a repeat of what happened with tobacco when aggressive marketing created generations of addiction and illness. The bottom line is this. Expanding marijuana storefronts in our unincorporated communities will not create safe neighborhoods. It will create more risk, especially for kids. Now is the time to listen to the voices of residents the way this new scientific evidence and to reject...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next caller.
This is Peggy Walker. Supervisors, there's just too much violence, and that's another reason for not pushing more marijuana businesses into our rural areas. Reports of marijuana-related psychosis and violence include a Wall Street Journal piece two days ago titled, "Did Pot Make the Dallas Ice Shooter Psychotic?" This draws attention to what experts have been telling us. Frequent and high potency marijuana use is associated with psychosis and violent behavior. The article reports Joshua John, the Dallas Ice Shooter, was more interested in marijuana than politics. He had pleaded guilty to felony marijuana trafficking. He had posted on a Reddit forum for cannabis users and worked on a pot farm where, according to his manager, it was all about the weed and didn't work hard, probably because he was too high. John's one example raises serious questions about the coherence of marijuana commercialization policies promoting high potency THC. The Journal reported Robin Westerman, who shot up a Minneapolis Catholic church last month, blamed his pot habits. Mass shooters Nicholas Cruz, Jared Lee Lounner, and Devon Kelly were found to be heavy pot users. High potency was blamed when a Minnesota man recently tried to drown his mother and sister and when a California woman stabbed her boyfriend to death. Today, almost all pot is high potency. Supervisors, we don't need more of it exposing our children, families, and the public and the environment to potential danger. Thank you for hearing my consent.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Good morning. My name is Becky Rapp. And with it being October 1st, I'd like to recognize October as National Youth Substance Use Prevention Month, a time dedicated to raising awareness and taking steps to protect our youth from the growing risks of early substance use and its devastating impacts on mental health. Today, I speak in memory of Parker Scott Cobberly, a 22-year-old resident who passed away on August 30 after a long and painful battle with severe mental illness brought on by the use of high potency THC marijuana products. Parker was a gifted musician, a compassionate friend, and a devoted brother and son. He carried a genuine spirit, a kind heart, and a desire to lift others up. But over the last three and a half years, he and his family struggled, and Parker's illness ultimately claimed his young life. Just this past Saturday, September 27, Parker's friends and family gathered for his celebration of life. His loss is still fresh, and his story is one of too many. In his honor, his family has asked for donations to be made to three organizations doing vital work in prevention and education for those who have been impacted by marijuana-induced psychosis. Mar-a-Non Family Group offers support to families affected by a loved one's marijuana use. Every Brain Matters, a nonprofit grounded in science and lived experience. And Johnny's Ambassadors, which educates youth and parents about the dangers of today's potent THC products on adolescent brain development, psychosis, and suicide. These groups are dedicated to educating on the link between marijuana use, particularly high potency THC products, and the serious mental health consequences in young people. This October is Re-Observe National Youth Substance Use Prevention Month.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
Hello, County Board of Supervisors. My name is Venus Siano, and I am the Head of Human Resources at a local biotech company and on the Personnel Advisory Board at the Port of San Diego. I recently began volunteering with the County of San Diego Bonita Animal Shelter through the Dog Day Out program. I also applied to become a regular in-house volunteer in July 2025. While I was quickly approved for the Dog Day Out program, I never received a response regarding my in-house application. Based on the recommendation of another volunteer, I resubmitted my application last month, and I still have not received a response. Given the recent APDS news stories that are now receiving national attention and have cast a negative light on the County of San Diego animal shelters, I'm here today to ask the Board to make the County Volunteer Program a priority. Having previously worked for the San Diego County Sheriff's Department, I fully understand the reality of budget constraints. But this is an area where the community is eager and willing to help at no cost to the county. By streamlining the volunteer application process and ensuring timely communication, the county can unlock a valuable resource committed to residents who want nothing more than to support the shelter's animals and staff. Right now, the lack of responsiveness and follow-through not only discourages volunteers, but also reflects poorly on the county, especially when public calls for volunteers are met with silence. That disconnect breathes mischtrass. In conclusion, I urge the Board to take a closer look at the current volunteer system and make meaningful improvements. and make meaningful improvements. By prioritizing this program, the county has an opportunity to ease the burden on shelter staff, rebuild public trust, and most importantly, ensure that more animals receive the care and attention they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Megan Stewart, and I come to you with a background in social work and direct experience working with youth. Today, I want to highlight the serious unintended consequences of allowing marijuana permits, billboards, and advertisements in our communities, especially in the unincorporated areas. This summer, the Government Accountability Office reported to Congress that young people are bombarded with mixed and contradictory messages about marijuana. On the one hand, they are told that substances can derail their health, education, and relationships, and on the other hand, they see billboards, storefronts, and digital ads promoting marijuana as if it were harmless. And the data is confirming the risks. A study published in Preventative Medicine found that teens exposed to marijuana billboards were twice as likely to report past-month use compared to those who had not seen ads. These exposures are strongly linked to lower perceptions of harm and higher rates of use. Here in California, the Healthy Kids Survey shows nearly 1 in 6 11th graders already report marijuana use in the past 30 days, often with high potency products like vapes or edibles. When advertising normalizes these products further, use will only rise. As someone who has walked alongside teens facing school suspensions, broken family trust, and declining mental health, often tied to marijuana use, I can tell you they are paying attention. Prevention campaigns lose their power when advertising and billboards contradict the message. Teens don't just hear what the public health agencies say, they see what adults permit and promote in their own environments. Allowing marijuana billboards and advertisements is not a neutral policy. It actively undermines the prevention work of parents, schools, and community organizations. By restricting or rejecting marijuana advertising, this board can send a consistent and protective message that the health and future of our young people matters more than the profits of the commercial industry. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Anne Riddle here. I'm on my way to one of our marvelous elementary schools in the unincorporated area, a K-6 school. They are planning their Red Ribbon Week activities, October being National Substance Use and Misuse Prevention Month. I've appreciated that this school has taken on their role in providing their students great prevention materials, and stressing how the choices they make during the elementary school age will help them chart a happy, successful life. And this is an important thing for them to know about now, because we understand here in our county, the age of first use is 12, and most 6th graders turn 12 during their sixth grade year. I think it's valuable to look around the county and see how many prevention programs the county has funded. By what I understand, there's only five throughout the entire county, and yet this county has a commitment to prevention, and you understand the role of substance use as it relates to mental health and how they're interwoven. I think we need to take a new look at the many organizations that are doing grassroots, community-based prevention, and move beyond the five large providers. And let's really work together to make the commitment that we see from the county regarding mental health and substance abuse reduction, and put it to work by putting our money where our mouth is, and providing the county funds to these smaller organizations that work with the families day in and day out. And hurrah to everyone who does Red Ribbon Week programming at the elementary school level. Was there ever a more important time for young people to understand that the adults in their lives...
Thank you. Your time is up, and we will go to our last caller.
Hi, my name is Andrea Ebbing, and I would like to read an Ethics Commission report that was sent over, San Diego County Ethics Commission. San Diego District Attorney Summer Stefan, our felony prosecutor, paid two felony defendants she was prosecuting, Andrea and Jesus Cardenas, throughout the prosecution, as well as $20,000 for their services post-financial fraud conviction on 9/24/24 and 3/28/25. Ms. Stefan also paid $430,000 in credit card payments using campaign funds, as indicated by her 460 form on our registrar. The payments were made to Card Member Services, Stripe, Bank of America, Capital One, and Edest Payments. Ms. Stefan also appears to have $2 million in identical campaign transactions to Nathan Fletcher. Both appear to be using Todd Gloria's treasurer Nancy Haley and Thea Bubbling. Jim Desmond also shows around $1 million or more in identical campaign finance reports against Summer Stefan and Nathan Fletcher, and also uses both treasurers. Ms. Stefan has used campaign funds to pay Town and Country Resort and Omni Hotels and Resorts over $500,000. Ms. Stefan has accepted over $85,000 from Leo Hamel as bribery money while she was prosecuting him to avoid jail time, despite news outlets reporting that Leo Hamel avoided jail time by cooperating with the investigation. Yet former Esti Sheriff Marco Garmo also cooperated with the investigation, but did not pay Ms. Stefan, and was sent to prison for being a part of the same felony conviction. Ms. Stefan accepted campaign donations from a party tied to the Poway synagogue shooting, the arms dealer Dallas Martin. Ms. Stefan also accepted thousands of dollars from white supremacy case Krabbe. Ms. Stefan refused to acknowledge or investigate the owner of Apex Recovery for fentanyl lollipop theft at the same time as one of the patients died of a fentanyl lollipop overdose naked in the bathtub while he was medical director. Instead of investigating these claims or doing anything...
Thank you. And Chair Lawson, rumor, that concludes public comment on, that concludes public comment for non-agenda public communication this morning.
Okay, thank you very much. And that is all of our public comment for the day?
Correct. That is all our non-agenda public communication for the day.
Okay, great. So we will now move on with the formation of the consent agenda. That's items one and two. All items on the consent agenda are routine and will be acted upon with one motion. Individuals will be able to comment on the consent agenda after the supervisors pull the items they would like for discussion. And for folks who just have most, more recently joined us, I want to, to remind everyone that we have a time certain for item four. That's Harmony Grove at 1:00 PM. So that, I think that went out from the clerk of the board yesterday. So just want to make sure people know that, so everyone knows what time, what time schedule we're on. So 1 o'clock for item four. Okay. So for the consent agenda, when you make your comments, please ensure that your comments are relevant to the items on the consent agenda. If you are off topic, you will receive one warning. If you continue off topic, you will forfeit your time. So would any of my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion of comments on the items on the consent agenda? Vice Chair Montgomery, step.
No need to pull. I will move the consent agenda.
Okay. Chair Protem Agiri?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Supervisor Anderson?
I have nothing to pull at this time, thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Desmond?
Nope, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. I just have some comments on item two, which is the Gillespie Field First Amendment and industrial ground lease. I just want to note that that is an extremely long, a very long lease, right? I think you said, I think it's 99 years, is that correct? And I, you know, I am just uplifting, I understand that some of these leases, the team has been negotiating and working out for quite some time, and we're sort of really path-dependent, and there's immediate reasons why they need to be signed. But I'm pretty uncomfortable with the entire idea of signing these 99-year leases while we're in the middle of kind of a comprehensive assessment of our sustainability principles and our local hire provisions, and, you know, all the guidelines that, and board policies regarding protecting working families, protecting our environment, ensuring that our sustainability values and our values around equity are reflected in our leases. So again, I'll be supporting this, but I don't like that this is here, that there's a 99-year lease, when, once we're locked into that, we're like totally locked into that, and I think we need to really prioritize the work to update our sustainability principles and guidelines regarding these lease, these lease holds, as well as the other equity-based guidelines. So I know that this is not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote against it today, but I, I really don't want to see, and I, and I understand, sometimes we have to move things because it's been in the queue for like multiple years, and it just has to go. But to the extent possible, I think we need to be thoughtful and not lock ourselves into things that we might regret later, so. Okay, so why don't we go ahead and take, we have a motion and a second, why don't we go ahead and take public comment?
Thank you, Chair Lawson, rumor. We do have nine total requests to speak on items on the consent agenda, two individuals in person, seven requesting to speak by phone. For any individual that requested to speak on the items on the consent agenda by phone, please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you. Go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows and tell it is your turn to speak at the podium. You'll then have two minutes to address the board. Please begin by stating your name for the record. Also, when speaking, please identify which items on the consent agenda you are speaking about. I'd like to invite forward allegedly Audra and Lee Chestnut.
My person uses the name Audra. I'm going to speak on both of them. So for the first one, with this time extension for two more years, I think it should give enough time to really make sure that there is an evacuation plan. I feel like as you guys are, you know, doing things to streets and putting in roundabouts, as I've said many times, you are impeding people's ability to get out, and with San Diego being everywhere a high fire zone, you know, we need to be making sure when plans are being put in place, that people are going to be able to evacuate in a timely manner, and all of the plans you are implementing are not going to, you know, cause people to lose their lives because they can't evacuate. And with this 99-year lease, just wondering, you know, at what point are, you know, Taret, you were talking about your sustainability, so I'm wondering when we're actually, we're attacking cars right now and saying people need to get out of their cars, we can't have them driving, we need them to take public transit, but what about the aircrafts that are going to continue to fly and, you know, create greenhouse gases that you guys want to stop? So when is that going to be something that you pay attention to? And also, is there something in the lease that talks about geoengineering and making sure that planes that can take off and land there are not up in the sky spraying toxic chemicals above us, manipulating the weather? And I know you're not going to do anything about it because it fits into your climate agenda, because you can say, oh my gosh, look at that, it's a thousand-year storm, I can't believe that happened. But if you really looked into it, you would see that what you're doing is detrimental to the people by not acknowledging those things happen, and you engage in leases with people that potentially will be doing that above our skies. And you guys breathe it in too, that's what's so weird, that you don't care.
Good morning. My name is Lee Chestnut. It's nice to be back here. It's been four and a half years. Update on Gillespie Field Eye Park. We're not pursuing sustainability ideas, we're doing sustainable projects at the, at the building to support heavy manufacturing in a building. I have, what, what was intended originally when I met you guys here four and a half years ago, was an investment of approximately $80 million. The combination of building the building and prepping it for heavy manufacturing with GKN Aerospace, which is a District Two heavy, a large employer, is now approaching $180 million. GKN told me that I was authorized to share with you that together with GKN, we're pursuing a net zero strategy that is specifically being accomplished. We're, we're moving towards net zero through the elimination of natural gas coming into the building. We don't have a meter, we didn't connect to the grid to, to that. We're pursuing solar, solar project on the roof for 1.4 megawatts with an expansion of up to four megawatts of solar power on the roof. The entire strategy in our world right now for manufacturing is to produce as much power onsite as we possibly can. Solar power is a major part of our strategy. GKN is an amazing partner for our project. They're, they're a global company in aerospace, transportation. Their goals are full net zero. They're pushing for as much as we can do to accomplish that. So I'm here to say, it's not an idea, it's an action. It's what we're building onsite right now. I'm trying to find, anyway, nice to be, nice to be here, and I thank you to all the staff that's supporting the project.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that are requested to speak by phone. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we'll go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Paul, on June 25th this year, Welder's offering 99-year lease, which is a long time for a lease. I am also wondering what is keeping tenants away from renting as they're staying away, it seems. What happens if Welder gets a 99-year lease and no tenants? The lease extension was denied at that time. Three months later, and Welder's back, kind of like Mad campaign. It also already has a 50-year lease, also a long time for a lease. Welder overextended their finances, managed to lease less than half the building, and they're again asking for the 99-year lease. Although this time it's on a 25-year extension with an option renewal, bringing it to 99 years. But a lot can happen in 50 years, let alone 99 years. The county also wants to add the Working Family Ordinance to the lease, which by itself could probably bankrupt the company by forcing toward here the county wage standards and all that stuff. Again, I think we can find a middle ground on this, like excluding them from the portion of the double or foe, but not the rest.
We can't hear you, Paul. You might have lost. You there? Okay, we'll go to our next speaker. Anne, you're our next speaker. I can hear you, Anne. Can you hear us? Anne? Okay, we'll come back to you. Andrea, can you hear us? Chair Lawson, rumor, I think there may be an issue with our call-in system, so we're going to need to take a moment to address it.
Do you want to take two minutes?
Yes, we'll need to address it before we can...
Continue, okay.
Yeah, we do.
We can take a two-minute break. People need to get up.
Apologies. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, our system seems like it's fixed.
Yes, thank you. So sorry.
So we can continue. Thank you.
Okay, unmuting Paul. Yeah, we can hear you, Paul. You have 18 seconds left, so go ahead and start speaking, and I'll start your timer. So sorry about that.
Great, thanks. And if anyone is uncomfortable to the point of suggesting we might regret it later, I suggest you vote against this or put it off for a later meeting for further study, Tara. And the extension of performance completion, like previous requests for an extension, I don't know what it is, I'm five years old, and it's...
That's your time, Paul. Thank you so much. And we'll go to our next speaker.
Conswello here. Okay, so today you're considering extending Weld, Weld's ground lease again. Okay, 99 years altogether. That's practically forever in public policy. Okay, but there's an even bigger picture. This isn't just about leases. Gillespie Field is a part of a growing aviation footprint tied to increased aerosol spraying, bioengineering experiments, and policies straight out of the UN Agenda 21. This is not a conspiracy. This is documented. Look it up. The public health warnings are there. Yet this board continues to ignore them, continuing the same pattern. Long-term deals, no transparency, no public consent. Stop finding away our land and our skies. I'm gonna read that again. There's an even bigger picture. This isn't just about leases. Gillespie Field is a part of a growing aviation footprint tied to increased aerosol spraying, bioengineering experiments, and policies straight out of the United Nations Agenda for the 21st century. This is not a conspiracy. This is documented. Look it up. The public health warnings are there. Yet this board continues to ignore them, continuing the same pattern, long-term deals, with no transparency and no public consent. This is big. This is huge. And yeah, just a warning to the people in the audience. Look up the United Nations Agenda for the 21st century because it's here. And as I mentioned, it's not a conspiracy, but your board seems to ignore it as though it is. And yet, they're doing everything to set up the blueprint for this agenda to take place. But go Padres!
Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker. Next speaker is Andrea. Okay, let me try refreshing this and then seeing if it works again. Okay, Andrea, can you hear us? Your phone may be muted, Andrea. Okay, let me go to the next caller and see if we're still having the same issue.
Due to the fact that I can no longer go ahead and give you suggestions like an invention that could actually make us money and solve our trash problem, you know, we have a bunch of trash cans. I'm not allowed to promote this person or else I get kicked out. But what I'm allowed to do is call you names. I want you to think about that the next time you choose to go ahead and prevent me from talking.
And expressing my points of view.
Because what I can do is use racial slurs, since I'm not allowed to go ahead and promote a young black inventor in the Board of Supervisors meeting. Isn't that correct, Tara? That during a non-topic item, I was trying to promote Julian Brown, which if we were to take his invention, we could reduce the amount of trash.
Please pause the speaker's time. Just a reminder, we're on the consent agenda. There's only two items. That's Items One or Two. So please just indicate which item you're speaking to and ensure that your comments are directly relevant to that item. This is your first warning. If you continue off topic, you'll be forfeiting your time. Thank you.
Could you please remind me what the topics are, and then I could address you guys properly, the way that I'm allowed to legally?
Yes, sir. It's Items One and Two in the consent agenda, as posted online. These are the, the performance completion dates on various secured agreements to complete subdivision improvements and related sequo, sequo findings. And then it's Gillespie Field, First Amendment to the Industrial Ground Lease with SGC LMC Weld Investment Company and related sequo exemption district.
Okay, I'm opposed to both of these because our board members are full of, you know, Uncle Toms. We're not allowed to go ahead and talk about, except for the issues that your bosses tell you you're, we're allowed to talk about. You don't have a voice of your own. You have a voice of the lobbyists that got you elected.
Okay.
That stolen voice.
You can please pause this time. Just saying which item you're talking to doesn't make your remarks pertinent to that item. Your remarks have to actually address the topic that is on the consent agenda. So apologies, but that is the rule. And if you, I would love you, let you try again, but your comments need to be directly related to the topics of those two items.
Absolutely fucking cunt. I do not agree with any of these topics because...
The speaker has forfeited his time. Thank you.
Thank you Chair Lawson-Rimmer. And not seeing anybody else called in and the other caller dropped off, that concludes public comment on items on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Montgomery Step and a second from Supervisor Geary. Please vote.
And Chair Lawson-Rimmer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present voting now.
Okay, great. Thank you all so much. Now move on to discussion items. So before we begin our discussion items, I would like to again remind folks that Item Four will be considered at 1:00 today. That, the clerk of the board shared that yesterday, so we should anticipate additional people joining us at 1:00. That was the time certain that he set yesterday. But you're welcome to join us for the entire meeting. So we begin with item, discussion item three. This is the Notice Public Hearing to Adjust the Warner Springs Community Sponsor Group Boundary to Include Adjacent Los Coyotes Reservation. We will begin with public comment.
Thank you Chair Lawson-Rimmer. We have five total requests to speak, one individual in person and four requesting to speak by phone. Also, I'd like to note for the record, we did receive one e-comment on this item, which was in opposition. For any of the individuals that requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. You'll have two minutes to address the board. I'd like to invite forward Audra.
Just want to be consistent. Anywho, my person uses the name Audra. This is interesting. I'm actually not so much against it. I just, you know, am always against the things you guys do because it's so nefarious. But I do think that people should more have input and be able to, you know, talk about what's going on in the community around them or with them. It's actually just sad because like even on Sandag, the natives don't have a seat to vote. I mean, it's in the works, but it's like, we love to take the land. It's my family, you know, take the land and then, you know, kind of hold it over the heads of these people, not really giving them a voice. So anytime there can be more input from the native community whose land was robbed from them, I think is good. In fact, you know, Sandag should be making it more of an effort to get on the, you know, gun and allow them to actually vote as opposed to being like, well, just allow you to have input. It's really sad the things that take place. And I have 58 seconds. So Tara, is this okay? I just want to make sure, because you're very, you're, you're keeping people in line. I just, I just want to make sure I'm doing good. Do I get a gold star today? So far so good? Oh my gosh, that is great. Am I head of the class today?
There's a lot of positive public participation today.
That is great. Isn't that nice? Isn't it great to see so many people here? Wonder what you guys are gonna decide to do. Hopefully you'll take the input of the people because you do say you like to hear from the people. That's why you give us a minute. You know what I'm saying? It's like enough time to really let you know how we feel. So hopefully you listen to the people here today and you don't offer them some kind of money to just shut up because that's what happens. It's very sad. But all right, we'll see what happens.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. And we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Yes, good morning, Paul LeBaud. This is a great idea, but unfortunately, since the tribe is federally designated, not sure whether the county itself could simply move the boundaries of the CSG without federal involvement. However, it is definitely true that the native tribes have been, you know, pretty much shut out of county affairs. They aren't represented at the county level. They aren't represented at Sandag. As far as I know, they aren't represented in any of the city councils either. So I mean, it's really a bad pathetic situation where a county is shutting out, you know, maybe a third of its land. I mean, you keep saying the most tribes in the country or in a county in the country, but you're not, they're still not represented. So what's the point of saying it? I mean, you know, I'm glad someone's finally taking action. That's pretty much all I have to say on this subject. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Paul. And then not seeing any other callers, that will conclude public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll turn to my colleagues if anybody has any questions. And do we have a presentation from the team?
No Chair, we do not have a presentation today.
Okay. So any comments or questions for, for loose folks at all on this item?
Take the land and then, you know, kind of hold it over the heads of these people, not really giving them a voice. So anytime there can be more input from the native community whose land was robbed from them, I think is good. In fact, you know, Sandag should be making it more of an effort to get on the, you know, gun and allow them to actually vote as opposed to being like, well, just allow you to have input. It's really sad the things that take place. And I have 58 seconds. So Tara, is this okay? I just want to make sure, because you're very, you're keeping people in line, I just, I just want to make sure I'm doing good. Do I get a gold star today? So far, so good? Oh, my gosh, that is great. Am I head of the class today?
There's a lot of positive public participation today.
That is great. Isn't that nice? Isn't it great to see so many people here? Wonder what you guys are going to decide to do. Hopefully, you'll take the input of the people because you do say you like to hear from the people. That's why you give us a minute. You know what I'm saying? It's like enough time to really let you know how we feel. So hopefully, you listen to the people here today and you don't offer them some kind of money to just shut up because that's what happens. It's very sad, but all right, we'll see what happens.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Yes, good morning. Paul LaBold. This is a great idea, but unfortunately, since the tribe is federally designated, not sure whether the county itself could simply move the boundaries of the CSG without federal involvement. However, it is definitely true that the native tribes have been, you know, pretty much shut out of county affairs. They aren't represented at the county level. They aren't represented at Sandag. As far as I know, they aren't represented in any of the city councils either. So, I mean, it's really a bad pathetic situation where a county is shutting out, you know, maybe a third of its land. I mean, you keep saying the most tribes in the country or in county in the country, but you know, they're still not represented. So what's the point of saying it? I mean, you know, I'm glad someone's finally taking action. That's pretty much all I have to say on this subject. Well, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Paul. And then not seeing any other callers, that will conclude public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll turn to my colleagues if anybody has any questions. And do we have a presentation from the team?
No, Chair, we do not have a presentation today.
Okay. So any comments or questions for our loose folks at all on this item? Or we can just move on? Yeah?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is to adjust the Warner Springs Community Boundary to include the Lost Coyotes Reservation. So I put this item forward last year and after hearing from the Lost Coyotes Tribe Members, tribal members, and from the Warner Springs Community Sponsor Group. Members of the Lost Coyotes Tribe, they often attend, they participate, they're right adjacent to the Warner Springs Community Sponsor Group boundaries. And the tribe would like the opportunity to be eligible for formal appointment to the group, but because the reservation lies currently outside of the sponsor group boundary, they're not able to. So the item today adjusts the Warner Springs Community Boundary to include the adjacent Lost Coyotes Reservation. But to be clear, the boundary adjustment does not give the county any land use authority over the Lost Coyotes land. The tribal lands are completely sovereign and are not subject to the county zoning or the permitting. But basically, this is, you know, neighbors working with neighbors, trying to do the best for the community and the surrounding area and just better relationships for the, both the tribe and the Warner Springs community. So lastly, I want to thank Darami and his team and the Planning Development Services for working so hard with the tribe and the sponsor group and for getting this item to the board. With that, I'll move approval of Item Three.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for the explanation. Appreciate that. I have no questions. Happy to support that. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, we have a motion and we've got a second from Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp. Please vote.
And Chair Lawson-Rimmer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present voting now.
Okay, thank you all very much. So now we're moving on to enhancing operational and recreational conditions at the El Capitan Reservoir. This is a joint item brought forward by Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp and Supervisor Anderson. So if either of you would like to present it?
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
I, first of all, I want to thank my colleague, Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp, for all her help and partnering on this. Both our districts know how much fun you can have at the reservoir, and we've had great success in the past with our partnership with the city and Lake Marina. This one was a little precarious in the last week, but we've met with everyone. We're all on the same page. It should be totally green-lighted, and it's going to enhance and give more recreational opportunities to the people of San Diego County. So with that, I make a motion in favor.
Thank you. Would you have anything to add?
I will go ahead and second that, and then I'll speak after public comment.
Okay.
Thanks.
Great. So let's go ahead and call the public comment. And we have a motion and a second on the floor. Thanks.
All right. Thank you so much, Chair Lawson-Rimmer. We do have 14 total requests to speak, nine individuals in person, and five requesting to speak by phone. Also like to note for the record, we did receive 228 e-commerce on this item. 214 of those were in favor, two in opposition, and one was neutral. And again, for any individuals that are requesting to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. Since we have 10 or more speakers on this item, you'll have one minute to address the board, and we'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. Again, as your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. We'd like to call the first three individuals, and that will be Tom Lowry, Allegedly Audra, and Robert Magrigal.
Well, good morning, Board of Supervisors. Glad to be here. So I am Tom Lowry. I'm with the Friends of the San Diego Lakes Group. I want to thank you for your time to have this discussion today. As a frequent user of the lakes, a proud resident of the county, and a concerned citizen, I am very encouraged that this is, that this item is even before you today. El Capitan is a treasure out in the county, an absolute treasure, and it means so much to so many that aren't here today and that will come in future generations, including our SoCal junior bass anglers. The fact is, it needs significant investment to keep the recreation program going and to make sure we can improve those opportunities. San Diego isn't alone in its budget challenges, but we must find a path forward. I want to thank you for your willingness to lead with this proposal, Supervisor Anderson and Stepp, and partner with the city. And we want to be a partner with you in this effort and ask that you vote yes.
Thank you, sir.
On saving El Cap. Thank you very much.
Robert?
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for bringing this matter forward and allowing time for its discussion. As a lifelong resident here in the county, someone who regularly enjoys our lakes, I'm genuinely heartened and see the focus and the importance in the community asset. Our El Capitan Reservoir is an invaluable regional resource. Its profound impact is felt by thousands of residents and holds incredible promise for those who will enjoy it for decades to come. The reality is simple. Keeping the recreation program viable and growing the activities the community expects will require substantial funding. Though every budget is tight, we must prioritize and find a solution to secure the jewel for the public. I commend the board for demonstrating a commitment to lead this partnership with the city and actively participating to find common ground. We are eager to support your work in this, and we strongly recommend your affirmative vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And as Allegedly Audra's coming down, we'll invite the next couple public speakers, Timothy Douglas and Matthew Kostrowski.
My person uses the name Audra. I'm wondering how the city is going to pay for this because the city is in a horrific deficit, and they're already coming after the people for parking and trash fees and things that people can't pay for. So, I mean, this probably needs to be something that is going to be a fee basis at the entry of the place so that, you know, the people of the entire city of San Diego, I mean, you can't keep increasing fees like they do. I mean, you guys do, it's putting everybody in a predicament, and it's just interesting if there's no contact with this water. And then we talk about how we need to preserve water. We're like giving people back their own sewage. And then we're allowing people to go into these reservoirs and potentially pollute them even more. So how can you keep up with testing if you have an increase in pollutants potentially? It's going to cost more and more money, and I just, people are in dire straits. So I'm just wondering where that money is going to come from. It's always the people.
You can come forward. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Timothy Douglas. I am the elected president of ASME Local 127 with the City of San Diego, City of Coronado, and City of Lemon Grove. I represent the employees at El Capitan Reservoir. I would like to first thank you and the pass board for the ongoing relationships to help with the reservoirs. It is this relationship that has allowed access for all San Diego. Today, I appreciate Supervisor Anderson's proposal to continue this relationship. There are areas of concern, though, within this proposal, but I know that as in the past, the city and the county can find a way to continue this positive working relationship. So I ask for your vote in favor of this item today. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Then I'll start inviting for the next two speakers, Gary Brennan and David Blackstone.
Good morning, chairperson and supervisors. My name's Mac Kostrowski. I work for ASME Local 127. We represent the employees at El Cap Reservoir and here today speak about Agenda Item Number Five. We would normally not come before the Board of Supervisors, but this item addresses the City of San Diego employees, which we represent. This is an opportunity for a continued relationship between the city and the county with this proposal, as Tim Douglas spoke about. Talking with Supervisor Anderson's office, the City of San Diego staff, this proposal will, over the next 120 days, seek ways where the county and the city can enhance the experience for those who use this regional treasure we call reservoir. We would expand, this would expand up to five days of access to the reservoir and hopefully do contribute, will hopefully also contribute to needed capital improvements, which the county and the city residents are seeking. ASME Local 127 sees this proposal as a win-win, and we wish for your support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. My name's Gary Brennan. I'm the president of the San Diego County Wildlife Federation, which is a coalition of sporting groups in the county representing approximately 20,000 people within San Diego County. I'm just here to thank you for taking up this issue and trying to once again enhance the operational recreation opportunities in the lake. It's, we've been dealing with this for a long time, the 70s, and recently, in the last couple of years, it's been a lot worse, and it's continuing. So I applaud the efforts of Joel Anderson and Mrs. Steve to put this back forward and try to get more of a long-term process and funding and afford, and make it affordable for people in the county to get out there and recreate. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. And the next speaker is coming forward. I'll call the last two in-person speakers, Dave Roté and Dion Akers.
Good morning, everybody. My name is David Blackstone, and I'm here to support the county's involvement in assisting or even at some point taking over the management of El Cap and the other reservoirs in the county. I was born and raised in San Diego, grew up hunting and fishing. This is very important to me and the quality of life that I have here in San Diego. It's a very unique reservoir, all of the reservoirs are. I think that the city has fallen short in the management of these reservoirs over the years. I know it's a tremendous task, hard for anybody. I don't believe that the Public Utilities Department at the city or the city council, most of them probably do not hunt and fish in San Diego County, but they're the decision-makers. So how do you have people representing us who don't participate in those activities or even understand?
Thank you. Thank you.
I suggest you support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dave Roté, and I'm a member of the San Diego Chapter of the Coastal Conservation Association. I'm on the board there. It's a national organization that is in 19 coastal states with 126,000 members nationwide. We partner with other organizations. We're primarily a saltwater advocacy, habitat, and hatchery organization, but we partner with other organizations that use these facilities, such as Friends of Rallo, that have taken well over 100,000 kids fishing on free trips locally. It's our observation that the more we engage with our natural environment, the more beneficial it is to our general well-being, and it helps us engage with our, with man-structured environments. So I'm here to vote, to encourage you to vote in favor of this. And I was looking at the murals on the wall, and, you know, they depict two things that are very near and dear to our membership. Recreation and conservation.
Thank you, sir.
So appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and Honorable Supervisors. My name is Dion Akers, here on behalf of San Diego Mayor Todd Gloria to speak on Item Five. Mayor Gloria and the City of San Diego grateful for the ongoing partnership and collaboration we share with Supervisor Anderson and Supervisor Montgomery Stepp, and we thank you both for bringing this item forward and for your commitment to supporting recreational access at the reservoir in our current and previous fiscal years. As a drinking water reservoir that is connected to multiple other reservoirs and treatment facilities in the system and that impacts other water agencies in the region, there are various regulatory and access priorities that the City of San Diego has an obligation to balance. Despite this challenge, we are confident that the city and county of San Diego can and will develop a partnership that best serves the needs of our many constituencies that use the reservoir without jeopardizing city personnel and staff, who oftentimes serve dual roles of managing recreation and also carrying out required regular water quality protection and related activities. We look forward to continuing to work closely with county supervisors and staff to develop this partnership in concert with the city of San Diego REOs who are here today in order to offer as much recreational access as possible, given our regulatory and water access requirements. Thank you. Please move the item.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that request to speak by phone. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Paul LaBold. So you want to fund what the city won't. Kids enjoy it, adults enjoy it, you know, pretty much everyone in the county enjoys these lakes, these recreational places. But, you know, it almost sounds like the city's setting up a financial dependency rather than an actual partnership. You should be demanding reimbursement from the city. You should not be depleting your assets like this. And, you know, the mayor's rep sure knows how to talk fast, but as I say, I mean, it's kind of like begging or maybe setting up a leech-like relationship rather than partnership. Anyway, I do not think that the city is acting responsibly, passing the legal indiscriminately garbage act that could result in it lowering of citizens and seniors.
Thank you. Your time is up. We will go ahead and go to our next speaker.
Amen to everything that Paul just mentioned. Couldn't agree more. It's disgusting. And talking about the mayor, where is he? Doesn't show up to city council meetings. He's not here. Like, what is he doing? Honestly? Yeah, with that being said, recall Todd Gloria. This is so, I was sure people would pay attention, but yeah, Padres are playing, so I guess, you know, that takes priority with the tax paying indentured servants who aren't paying attention. Oh, that's where Todd's probably in Chicago, huh? Anyways, with that being said, yes, let's not be careless, but yeah, people do use these beautiful sites and, dang, it's just such a bummer. Hold your representatives accountable, people, instead of just...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Hey, this is not about expanding recreational access. It's about bailing out the City of San Diego for a fourth time. Why doesn't the county bail out other cities? Is it because there's a former corrupt San Diego Council member on this board? This isn't a pilot program. It's a full-blown quid pro quo agenda at the expense of services to county residents to the tune of $3.1 million, filling San Diego's failures and defunding of essential services. The city's not even investing in dam infrastructure like they're supposed to, hence why they keep dumping millions of gallons of perfectly good water while pretending there's a drought. When is there going to be accountability amongst the San Diego progressives, including Monica and Joel? The deputy statement claims that 6,000 residents signed petitions opposing closures, but were those all county residents or were they City of San Diego residents who are suffering under the government they voted for? They need to get a grip on San Diego's corruption and stop being a parasite upon this county. San Diego needs to sell the reservoirs since they have no idea how to manage anything at all, only how to tax people more.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Hey, I think you guys should go ahead and take them over. Also, give them the money as if they were still running it. Like, for example, when, you know, with the flooding, they, we gave them money to go ahead and handle that. Or the 100 anniversary for Balboa Park, we gave them an ungobby amount of money and they just chose to do whatever they wanted with it. I, I, I mean, we need to go ahead and keep the migrants housed, and they need as much money as humanly possible. So if you want to take the responsibility of that and then still give them as much money as you were still giving them, that way they could go ahead and house migrants instead of people. That way, we could keep our homeless. I, I saw it was going down finally this year because Trump said, hey, look, you don't get free money if you can work. And so people are going to work? I mean, novel idea. But you want to reverse...
Your time is up. And Chair Lawson-Rimmer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. There's a lot of board excitement to comment on this item, so I will begin with Supervisor Montgomery Stepp.
Thank you so much, Chair, and also thank you Supervisor Anderson for your work and commitment to this proposal. Very happy to partner with you on this board letter, especially because the El Capitan Reservoir is so close to County District Four, and a lot of my constituents also enjoy the lakes. So I want to thank the mayor and also Local 127 and city employees for all that you do in...
and for your public comment here, Tim and Matt. Good to see you both. And also to the Friends of San Diego Lakes Group and all the community for your continued advocacy to really preserve our spaces, especially in San Diego County. It's such a beautiful county to enjoy, so thank you so much for all of the work that you do. And the fact that more than 6,000 individuals signed petitions opposing closures reflects how important parks and recreation resources are for our county residents. And while San Diego County, from the outside looking in, is recognized a lot for our beaches and coastal resources, our lakes, our parks, and our recreation centers and resources located in the inland communities are just as important for residents that may not have that immediate access to, to the coast, and also participate in the various activities that we've heard from public comment here today. I think we all agree that it's important for the El Capitan Reservoir and its recreational programming that it stays open as much as possible. We just need to figure out how to sustain that in the midst of difficult budget decisions, both at the county and the city. And so I think that this proposal does that. I'm looking forward to the report back in 120 days to see what kind of partnership that the county and the city can have to accomplish our shared goals. So thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you to those who are not here but continue to advocate however they can. And thank you again to Supervisor Anderson. Thanks.
Okay, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. I appreciate Supervisor Montgomery Stepp's clarification there that it's going to come back in 120 days, because I was trying to find it. Oh, there, there it is. So I guess my concern, and I'm all for, you know, providing recreational opportunities and access, particularly it's mostly our unincorporated residents that are using these facilities. So I'm okay with that, but again, it sounds like a bailout for the City of San Diego. But what I want to make sure is that we, the county, we're not taking too much or any undue risk, particularly with liability, if there's accidents or things like that on the lake, and who's going to be responsible for that. So I think, and I understand you're still working out an agreement with the City of San Diego, but, you know, I would like to see that, you know, if, if they're going to still own it but were operating it, and I'm sure if there's a lawsuit, we'll all get sued, but I want to see if we, you know, have the City of San Diego assume much of that risk and liability. I mean, it, I don't mind taking it over, but where's that risk and liability going to lie? So I'd like to see, ask county staff when you're, when you're going and doing these negotiations, that if the city could indemnify us or something to that effect. Because I think once we take over El Cap and once we start doing this, I know this is a four-year pilot, the city's never going to budget for it again. And so we're going to be continuing to do it. So I just want to make sure upfront we get proper protections in place to make sure we're protecting the county. And if, if they want us to take over the assets, then maybe we, we take on the assets and then we would have the liability. But it's kind of a weird marriage and partnership in the meantime, and I just want to make sure we're not exposed. I will be supporting the item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll call on myself. I put myself in the queue. I think this item is very interesting. There's a lot going on. I think, first of all, I think it's great as a board to continue investing in our, our natural environment, our recreational amenities. I'm, I have never been to the El Capitan Reservoir. I will be going now, so I can catch carp, and I will be taking Eva Kai fishing. So thank you both for, for bringing this forward, because I completely agree that prioritizing, investing in our natural environment and our recreation areas and giving people a chance to get out into nature has to be one of our top priorities and continuing to create a good quality of life for people in our region. I think there's some other pieces I do want to note. I think there's a, you all are throwing a little shade in the nicest kind of way at our Friends of the City, which is basically to say, clearly the county is doing a better job maintaining our recreational resources, so we better take over the El Capitan Reservoir because we're doing a better job at Lake Marina, which I agree. I think that's great, little friendly competition. So, you know, I appreciate the endorsement by the city of our capacity and capability at maintaining the highest quality recreation areas. I do also think it's useful to note, you know, it is ultimately, we're talking about a $600,000, like, ongoing commitment to basically subsidize city operations, which sometimes that's how it works. I think we have done a great job with fiscal management at this county, but I do want to note we're clearly facing pretty significant budget challenges, as we've discussed many times with HR One and all the kind of pressures coming down the pipeline. So I hope that if we do support this today, that there's a recognition and acknowledgement that is if we take on additional financial commitments, that I hope our board can work together on finding some additional resources and sustainable funding solutions to maintain those commitments. We can't just fund more, fund more things without finding ways to pay for them. So sometimes we divorce those two issues about, you know, it, we, we come together and we vote for something that all feels really good, but there's not like a real hard conversation about how does this get paid for and what other services that we provide to our community might be jeopardized or cut if we have to, if we move forward in this direction. So my view is I don't think we should look to be cutting any of the services we provide to our community. I think services like this kind of recreation at El Capitan Reservoir are incredibly important, but I would really hope to have partnership from my colleagues as we look to be able to, to find funding solutions to be able to, to make these investments, because we, we can't just vote to spend $600,000 a year without thinking ahead about where that's going to come from. So my support for this item today is based in part on my commitment to looking for those resources. I would not feel comfortable moving this forward if I was not committed to trying to figure out how to pay for them. I think that's a really important part of fiscal responsibility in government. And I think that we just have to say that I'm happy to, I'm very happy to support this, but we have to work together to figure out how to pay for kind of these additional recreational opportunities and additional investments. And I think the last thing I would say is that if this passes today, I hope we can get a nice tweet of thanks from our Friends of the City for the partnership, because we're trying to be good partners to, to, to the City of San Diego and so that our community can have the amenities that, that folks deserve. So with that, I'm happy to support it, and if anyone has any tips on fishing, let me know, because I will be going. Thanks. Supervisor, sorry, Chair Pro Tem Geary.
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank Supervisor Anderson and Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp for bringing this item forward. And I also want to thank the broad coalition of support. I think that, that, that shows that this is something that is very much not just needed but wanted in the community. As someone who represents a district, while we have limited open spaces, I think it's so important to make sure that we not only maintain those recreational, affordable, family-friendly spaces, but enhance them, because this will serve not only the rural areas of the county but the entire county from beyond. I want to also thank our labor partners. It was important to hear from you, and I appreciate you coming and telling us you guys are making progress. I certainly look forward to hearing back in 120 days about the path forward as far as the partnership, but I am very happy to support the item. Thank you.
Supervisor Anderson.
I apologize. I dropped a ball a little bit. I want to thank Ask Me's leadership for showing up today and being a great partner in, in working out the arrangement. And I want to thank Mayor Gloria. His office has been absolutely fantastic. We've worked on this, and we talked about it more than a year ago, and so it's going to come to fruition, makes great sense. And I just want to thank both of them. I neglected them early on, and I didn't mean to. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we have a motion by Supervisor Anderson, a second by Vice Chair Montgomery Stepp. Please vote.
And Chair Lawson-Rimmer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present in voting night.
That's all we have. Everyone was very efficient this morning, and we actually already finished non-agenda public comment. I'll take a moment. I know we were all very tired at the end of the meeting yesterday. If anyone has any additional report-outs from boards that we sit on, representing the county on any of those boards, I know Chair Pro Tem Geary reported out, I did as well. If there's anything else, this would be a good time to share. And if not, we will recess till 1:00. Okay? Recession till 1:00 o'clock.
All right. The board is in recess until 1:00 PM?